Okay, we are live.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 9th, 2020 Plan Board Meeting. Everybody, please join me in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I say for America.
And to the Republic for which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Liberty, justice for all. Thank you very much. Sarette, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chairman Curry.
Here.
Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Ms. Garbino.
Here.
Mr. Matt Namara.
Yeah.
Mr. Mattis.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
And Mr. Ziberto.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the minutes from the October 14th, 2020 meeting. Unless anyone has any additions or corrections, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And next, we have a time extension for Coddling Rock. At the request of the applicant, they'd like to have a six-month extension from 12, 10, 20 up to and including 6, 18, 21. And for the record, this is an application for a nine-lock conservation subdivision, steep slope protection, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control, tree removal permits with construction of two-town roads and a preliminary conservation subdivision. And the property is located at the side of Coddling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony's Road, and it's located in our 120 zoning district. Any members have any problem with that extension?
Do we know, do we know why they're asking for the extension?
Yeah, you should, you should have Matt Geronda brought in.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we should open it, right, to the lobby now for everyone? Or do you want to just keep each?
Just Matt Geronda.
At this time, we're going to admit everyone?
No, 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 just unless there's somebody, unless there's somebody from Coddling Rock who would like to speak.
Okay, hang on. Anyone from, I'm sorry, what is it again? Can you repeat that?
Coddling Rock.
Okay, if you're not here from Coddling Rock, we're going to put you in the waiting room.
All right, there's Matt.
Who's here to speak?
Matt Geronda is here.
Okay.
Hi, guys. Hi, Sarette.
Everyone else, we're going to put you in the waiting room?
No, just me. Sorry.
We got you.
Can I make a motion to extend the?
Well, there was a question.
For Matt, so. There was a question on why, why the long period of time, so we were going to let Matt address that.
Oh, I apologize, guys. I didn't, I just got in the Zoom waiting room. For the record, Matthew Geronda from BIBBO Associates here, behalf of the applicant. Yes, we're requesting the extension. We are currently in front of the DEP with our SWIP application for their review and approval. We've just wrapped up stormwater testing with the DEP as well as the Health Department. There's obviously been some delays due to circumstances with just, you know, sort of, I don't want to say pandemic-related, but more workload-related. We're waiting on some survey information for, as far as plat goes and tree surveys. But again, we are, we're in the process of pursuing all outside agency approvals currently. I also am aware that the applicant's attorney, I believe, reached out to the town's attorney to begin drafting all easement documents, and we are actively pursuing, and hopefully we will have final approval prior to us having to ask for another extension.
Any other board member comments or questions?
No, that's what I just wanted to know.
Okay, and Nancy, I believe you made a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to extend the six-month extension from December 10th, 2020 up to and including June 8th, 2021 pursuant to Section 150-12 end of the code of the town of Selma.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing for the Blue Stone Peak Academy. And as per the applicant, he's asked to adjourn this with, actually with no fixed time to return. This comes, seems kind of silly to keep putting this every, every month on the agenda when I don't think they have anything in the, in the pipeline right now for a closer date. I think you all received the memo. I think it was from Mr. Wise.
An open adjournment. The problem is, and Sarette would have to clarify it, but isn't it that the town, the reason it's still open on our end is because we can't deal with it until the town board adopts the amendment to the zoning code.
Correct.
That, that is true, Nancy, but the, the whole project seems at the moment to not be moving forward, so.
Right, I can understand it.
Yeah, right.
So I think, did somebody, did somebody just make a motion to give them that adjournment?
No, but I, I can make that motion.
Okay, so it's basically with, with no forward date to it. So is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So next, our first agenda item is then is North American Water Company, the Dyker Street Wetland and Water Course Protection Permit. I believe we have representation from the applicant here.
Right, and, and John, we may want to check some of the participants that are waiting in the waiting room may be here for the public hearing, and.
Okay, okay. I was just going to see if the applicant had anything else he or she wanted to bring before I went back to the public hearing.
Okay.
Who's here? I'm not sure who's here from, from North American.
Michael Chortel is the applicant. Is he in the waiting room?
Yes, we're going to admit him now.
Kusak.
Sure.
There he is. His audio is off. Yeah, and I think, I think Mr. Kusak, it was, I thought I saw him also.
Okay.
And Kristen Barrett was there too?
Oh, yes.
She's in.
With the other, she's with the other item.
This, Tom, all right.
And should we also admit Kristen Barrett as well?
No.
She's next.
Okay, she's next.
Yes.
Okay, and let's just see if we can get Chortel.
No, Mr. Chortel is in. I think you need to check to see if there's any public waiting to participate in the public hearing.
I also expect John Kilpatrick and Chris Peters to be joining in if they're in the waiting room.
We only have Chris Peters.
Yeah.
Matt Hayes, Nicolette Luang, and Rebecca Valk in the waiting room at this time.
Chris Peters is, is, is part of our, our team.
Okay.
Does anybody from, from this application, do you want to, do you want to give a brief preview and then I'll reopen it for the public hearing?
Hello, Chris Peters, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we've got Chris Peters joining us via phone, by telephone. And is there anyone else that we need to admit at this time?
What are the names in the waiting room?
John Kilpatrick.
Yeah, he should come in.
Okay. John, are you there? Are you with us?
Yeah, I see him showing up. He's connecting to audio now.
Okay.
And I don't know who Nicolette's with. Is she with the GAC or is she?
She's with, she's with the GAC.
Okay. Is, is Tom Kusak on there?
Yes.
While we're waiting, I just wanted for the, for the record, we have a letter from the New York City, D.C., and also a letter from Woodard and Curran.
Okay, who else are we waiting for to join us right now?
I believe audio for Mr. Kilpatrick.
Okay, for Mr. Kilpatrick.
This is John Kilpatrick. I'm on here.
Hey, John.
Hey, good evening, folks.
Sure. I just wanted to see if you wanted to give a brief overview of anything about this that's changed since our last meeting, and then I'm going to open it up to the public hearing.
Okay, so the, forgiving here, so the first, we have two issues before the board here. We have the, the wells in the building.
That we're doing the wells now.
Okay, so I think we're looking for, Tom Kusak's going to, going to be covering this one. I see Tom on here.
Okay.
Yes, this is Tom Kusak from WSP. I'm a senior hydrogeologist at the firm. I've been working at the Dyker Water Company site for a number of years prior to the ownership of New York American Water. Very familiar with the site, study parcel, in addition to the overall hydrogeologic conditions in the town. I've worked on a number of projects over my 35-year career. Which I'll discover briefly was, I prepared an act for impact assessment evaluation, and it was key to drilling activities and the GAC building. I'll just briefly discuss the aspect of, you know, as you're aware, there are three proposed well sites in, in the application. As defined, the plan is to drill, you know, one to two of the locations and not to drill all three locations. The, obviously, the number of wells will be determined by the success of the drilling program of each, you know, from one, from one location to the other, in addition to the water quality of, of one location to the other. The three proposed well locations are very close to each other. So, you know, if we have two unsuccessful wells or two wells with water quality issues, we're not going to be drilling a third location. We feel very favorable that we should get good water quality and adequate water within one to two locations. One location was provided as an alternate location, the request of D.C. The wells are being, are being proposed to basically solve a water supply adequacy problem and to address a water quality problem of existing wells, as you're aware. The development of a well or no more than two wells here would be utilized to augment the existing water supply source. There will be no increase in overall water demand of this system as a result of placing a well or two additional wells in service. These are to augment the existing system. A number of wells have had a significant loss in yield, as much as 50% loss in yield. And, and particularly in regards to well six, it has elevated chloride concentrations, and that well will likely be taken out of service on the success of the drilling program. Aspect of the act for impact assessment, you know, we looked at recharge, which was a key component. And obviously, there is more than, as the report indicates, it's more, it's significantly more than adequate recharge to the watershed. You know, even under extreme drought conditions. And in addition, the water supply is not considered consumptive because the water is not being discharged in a sewage treatment plant into a stream and outside of the watershed. The actual groundwater that is withdrawn from the wells is recharged back into the aquifer via the septic system. So the groundwater consumption is not considered significant, and the development of these additional wells will have no impact on the overall recharge or overall water budget to the aquifer. On the aspect of water quality, historically, drilling of wells do not impact water quality, so therefore there will be no impact from the temporary disturbance or from the drilling activities themselves. You know, drilling wells are not basically an activity that raises a red flag in the aspect of impacting water quality, which is what the act for protection regulations, you know, are, are basically geared toward is basically land use and, and basically impact associated with various land uses. And, you know, obviously, drilling activities are not an activity that's my or, or a part of a component of an act for impact study. It's more geared nitrate phosphate loading and land use activities. The second evaluation was obviously of the GAC building, and the GAC building, keep it simple, is it really, it's a, it's a treatment building, as you're aware. It's a 351-square-foot building. There is no septic, so therefore there's no nitrate and phosphate loading. A key component of that for impact evaluation requirement, so we don't have that as a concern. And the building is going to use the existing stormwater management there that's, that's in place. And basically, in the aspect of impervious surfaces and impact of recharge, the water will sheath flow off of this small treatment building and onto the ground and be, will be available to continue to be recharged into the aquifer, where she, will naturally sheath flow as it is now and be available where the soil is dry to recharge the aquifer.
Excuse me, sir, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're treating this as two separate items, if you don't mind. The first one is just the well drilling, and then our next item is, is the building.
Okay.
And that's the way we have, that's the way we have the, the public hearing. I just didn't want you to have to go over this again.
Okay, so basically, our discussions and bindings in that for assessment, you know, we don't feel there would be any degradation or contamination of groundwater intended to be protected by the groundwater protection overlay.
I guess, unless you have something else before I open it up to the public. Joe, do you want to make any comments? Because I noticed one of your comments is you think that a SWIP is needed. Is that correct?
Well, there's a couple of things, yeah, thank you. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about. I concur with, with Tom's overall assessment. We've reviewed the report. We have some very minor comments, I think, to incorporate, and now we've seen the response to comments, and there's just really two of them that I want to chat about. One of them is relative to the disturbance, and one of the things, you know, Tom, that I honestly did not think about until we were, you know, getting to this conversation of disturbances. We are using this process to get the official permit and place for well 2C, even though we built that under emergency purposes. I think it's just prudent for us to wrap that in as well. And I guess my concern is, I heard what you just said about, well, there's no chance you're going to be disturbing all three locations. I don't know if when we wrap in 2C, whether that pushes us over the 5,000. The situation that I want to avoid, honestly, is, let's say you have to, let's say you, you're, you have to drill all three wells, and now you're outside of the bounds of, of, of a permit. And I wouldn't want to have to be halting the process at that time. It's a relatively simple SWIP. Just so you know, I'm fine if we do it as an addendum or, or the existing plan. It doesn't have to be standalone document. It could be an amendment, I mean, addendum to that plan, just that everything's in one place and wrapping 2C into.
Yeah, so Joe, Joe, we had a constructive dialogue prior to the meeting, and we, and then Janet indicated it was a concern. I just want to let you know, the applicant has no problem doing that. The SWIP, you know, we understand that you're going to look at things cumulatively. And so, you know, obviously, all of the sediment control and the silt fence is already out, is basically already on the map.
Yep, it's already identified.
It's just generating the SWIP written document.
Yep.
And that is really not a.
Yeah, and just roll in, just roll.
Yeah, we have no, we have no problem with that.
So, and just make sure we roll 2C into that, so we get that covered. And the other item, the other item that I had, and this is, if you recall, one of the last items, last meetings, we, we spoke about trying to, to do a phase-one site assessment in order to determine whether there is a continuing source of the PFAS and PFOA on-site, and that was completed and submitted in there. There was no such ongoing source, you know, it could be a dumping area or maybe a historic fire where, where some of the firefighting foams might have been used. It, it looks like there's none of that in the history of this. And what was identified, excuse me, is that it could potentially be coming from the, just the use of household chemicals into the septic systems. You know, we had a comment in there about developing a management plan, and even after receiving the comments from the applicant, I checked in, you know, with our practice leader on the, on, on, you know, the waste, on the drinking water side, who's very familiar, works very much inside of the PFAS and PFOA space, and he more or less concurred that, that coming up with a management plan would be something that would be very difficult, but he suggested an alternative that, that I think, Mr. Kilpatrick, you might want to think about. I think it makes a lot of sense to maybe some informational documents, you know, some information that can be provided to the homeowners just to make sure that, especially given the proximity of the septic to where the new wells are going, it may just be prudent so that people are aware of what not to dump down the drain. So I'm not, I don't think that we move away from a formal plan that we're going to be asking you to comply with, and more towards a request that we incorporate information to the homeowners such that they can help you manage your water supply by not dumping chemicals into the, down the drain that could potentially impact your, your water supply.
Yeah, so this is John. So one comment I'll have on that is, you know, we, we will have communications with the residents out there in the Willow as part of the, the treatment and everything that we're doing with the building. So we've actually applied to the state, New York State Department of Health and the local health department for deferral. Because, you know, now that the laws are enacted, there are wells that are over the MCL. We're not, we're not putting out that water into the system. We're blending it down, but we do have wells over the MCL. And in our process of applying for a deferral to give us time to build this treatment to the health department, there's communications that we have to put on our website and notify our customers due to that. So, so the one concern I have with, you know, with us telling customers, you know, what the source of this, of, of the PFOA is, we don't actually know for certain. This is a guess. And, you know, what they should be doing in their household to prevent that from getting into the groundwater, that's a guess too. You know, even when we talk about that, any health effects of, of PFOA or 14 dioxide or any other chemicals that we're talking about, you know, we're, we're not a health agency. We can only point to what other agencies put out there. You know, our job is to, you know, deliver water that meets all the standards and comply with the laws. So, you know, for us, for us to, to speculate to customers about what, what might be causing this and what practices they should adopt, it just gives us concern. It's a little bit outside of our, our jurisdiction. It's outside of our wheelhouse, outside of, you know, what, what we do.
We, you know. And I think to take a moment for some of the board members to get a understanding of PFOAs, they're what's considered an emerging contaminant. As of August of this year, it's become, you know, on, you know, it's the New York State DOH-promongated PFOAs as a contaminant and promulgated in MCL, and it's in, you know, it's in parts per trillion, to give you an understanding of how minute the reporting is on it. But PFOAs have been around since 1940, and they're really in every, pretty much, most of your household items to your cookware, to your plastic bottles, to your Tupperware, to the conditioner you use, the suntan lotion, fabric softener. I mean, I'm just trying to get, give it under, I can go on and on here. So just to give you an understanding of the F O A constituent itself, that it is prolific in our daily use and in our, you know, in carpets and lotions that we put on ourselves and shampoo and, you know, the, the little fabric softener sheet that you put into your dryer. So, you know, just wanted to give you under, just to, you know, if you don't know, really, I just wanted to give you a little bit of understanding of it, that's all.
Well, I appreciate that, Tom, and, and many of those are solid waste, right, that aren't getting flushed down the drains. But, you know, I, I understand the complexity in telling people what fabric softeners they can use and which ones they can't, right? Because obviously, doing laundry, that's, that might be contributing. So maybe, John, as you're putting those notifications up on required notifications up on your site, is there a way to, do those notifications include raising the awareness for the items that contain PFAS and PFOA, just so that there's some level of awareness with the public as to how they could do their part not to contribute to more PFAS and PFOA?
There, there would be, and, and again, we would point to the EPA and the Health Department into, you know, original material that they've developed, and we would, we would either incorporate that on our website or link to that. So I, I think that's something that we can do, because, you know, I know I've heard some of the, the D E C and EPA guys talk, and I know that they're, they're looking at limiting PFAS in other ways, like through limiting, eliminating through manufacturing processes and, you know, what's allowed into New York. So there's a lot of other efforts like that from D E C and EPA. I think if, if we link to, to information like that in our communication that'll be required by the Health Department as part of this deferral process, I think we can link to those sites and, and link to the experts, so people can, can go there and read it for themselves.
I think that, that, to me, my main, my main item is about raising awareness, and
Absolutely.
I think, I think that relying on set agency data makes a lot of sense. Maybe what we can do is, we'll just morph this comment into that, maybe you could provide us with a, you know, provide us with the, with that page that you're going to put up.
Yeah.
Right? And if you can provide us to that with that page, at least we'll have it for the record to close this item.
Okay, absolutely.
And John and Tom, for my two cents, I, I think you're going to have a bigger hit when you have links available to people, because, not knocking you guys, but I think the public would probably appreciate more stuff coming from D E C or D E P. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah, we had, we had reference in our response. You may all not have seen that, because we provided, you know, the typical reference of A W W A, EPA, and, anyway, so, yes, we understand that that would be a very, you know, a much more maybe embraced reference, yeah.
Okay.
And, and they're, and they're very good tools also.
Yes, yes.
I mean, we're, we're all looking at this from afar right now, because it's, you know, it's an emerging contaminant, you know? So we're all looking, you know, and then, but as time progresses, we're going to get a better grasp on it, and we're going to have, you know, we, we could probably have a more constructive conversation, you know, a couple, a year from now on this subject, you know?
Agreed, agreed. So one of the other items that we had a lot of conversation the last time we had the public hearing open was relative to the pumping plan. We've reviewed the pumping plan, and we, we, we saw a little bit of a gap to the west, and we've asked for some wells to be added on the west. The applicant has identified a a primary well and a secondary backup if that individual isn't willing to participate, and I thought the proximity of those made a lot of sense and satisfied that comment as well. So that was an, an item that we had open and that I feel comfortable with, and you know, everything else, there was a response to doc, to documents. They, they were all satisfactory, other than the clarifications we talked about here tonight, and I just think we got to roll those into the final documents, and then, and then we'll get to go.
Thank you. I'm just, yeah. I was just going to say, I was going to let, I was going to let Sarette, if she had any comments to make, and then I was going to listen to board members before I open it to public.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't have any comments. You know, usually, these are largely Joe's uninvolved because of the secret and groundwater
Right.
issues in terms of zoning, so we'll just see, you know, where we go at the end of this, but we have not. in terms of zoning, so we'll just see, you know, where we go at the end of this, but we have not, uh, fin by any means the secret process.
So, um, board member comments, please.
Um, good, I wanted to find out when I, it, tell me if I'm correct, when I was reading, you were saying you, the wells are gonna go down about seven hundred and ninety feet, was that correct?
Uh, that, I would, I would probably say, uh, more like six, uh, more in the six hundred and fifty, uh, foot range, uh, yes.
How, how deep are the, how deep are their present wells?
Uh, roughly around that depth in the five to six hundred foot range.
What about, what about, do you know? There were a couple of people, a couple of people concerned about how it would affect the wells that houses have. But do houses have wells that go down that deep?
Yes.
Uh, I would probably say
They do.
Uh, typically in the air, typically in the area of the wells range, uh, from, you know, on average, three hundred and fifty feet. In some instances, if they have not encountered water-bearing fractures to the depth of three hundred and fifty feet, they would go deeper to encounter water-bearing fractures, but the average depth in the area is three fifty, with certainly wells going to six hundred, six hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, thank you.
And to give you a sense, you know, Bruce, that's not, I, I concur, that's not uncommon. I mean, I look at just me and my neighbor, we're literally two acres apart, and his well is, he has two wells seven hundred feet deep, I have one well a hundred and fifty feet deep, right? It's, it all depends on how we detect those fractures.
Right, right, right.
You're the lucky one.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's why I was thinking for my own.
I think I picked that well, Joe.
Yeah, we have, we have the same thing over in Watergate and Granite Springs, West Summers Park, same story.
You know, we understand the concerns of the offsite, uh, uh, homeowners, nearby homeowners, just like with the pump test on well 2C, you know, Westchester DOH require, requires us to do an offset well monitoring program, which was conducted for 2C, it will be conducted for any additional proposed wells here. You know, but I think to some level of comfort, you know, we're not increasing the water demand here. The groundwater you know, has been a significant number of years. And I think the key component, um, you know, is that fact that there is no increase in proposed, in, in the taking of water from the ground. That doesn't dismiss the fact of us, you know, conducting an offset well, a thorough offset well monitoring program, which we have done, we, which we did for 2C, and will do for the additional wells. You know, that is not a, that is not a significant burden of an applicant in a groundwater exploration program. Whether you're gonna monitor three, or six, or ten, you know, um, that's really not a big effort. The, the, really, the only problem is, in some instances, people don't want their well monitored, and as you know, there's nothing that we can do about, you know, we can offer it. And, um, you know, but I'm comfortable, you know, I'm, I'm confident, and I think, you know, uh, Joe has reviewed our plan, we will conduct a thorough offset well monitoring program, we will address that.
Okay, thank you.
Requirement of Westchester.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments?
Tom, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection was at the last meeting, we had a specific uh, person from the public that was interested in that well, and my understanding is, based on the review, is that that well has been added on the map.
Yep, yep.
I just wanted to point that out for the board.
Yeah, okay. Um, Vicki, do, do you have anybody calling in, or is there anybody in the, um, in the room?
Um, I've got the phone, nobody has called, um, and there are no new, uh, text messages.
Is there anybody in the waiting room that, that's here, that would like to speak on behalf of the public? Hmm. Um, I'm assuming then that their questions have been answered. Um, then I, I guess if, if the board's okay, I'll, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and we still have to declare ourselves lead agency, Saret. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, you already did thirty days of the past, you declared your intent, so you can now accept your role as lead agency.
Okay, and so what are our next secret steps?
Well, uh, you know, we have to prepare a negative declaration, you know, in conjunction with Joe's office, uh, because they have all the details on this. And then we can do a draft, you know, that and a draft resolution for the January meeting.
All right. Uh, well, first, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency for the record.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Would, uh, Saret, or, uh, would we expect in January that we could get, um, you know, uh,
I have to tell you, at least on my computer, you are, uh, going in and out, so I can't hear you.
Um, excuse me, then I'll repeat again, um, uh, would we be going, uh, in January at the next meeting, would, would we, we, would we be determining the, um, you know, neg deck on this? Going for a vote?
All, all up to Joe. Joe, are they ready at the next meeting for everything? You have to unmute.
Sorry, I was unmuted. So, um, Tom, what I would say is just wrap all of the responses, the comments into the documents. We're gonna move forward with the preparation of the neg deck and the resolution, and I, and I'm assuming that we're gonna be able to, um, resolve at the January meeting.
Okay, great, we're just, we're trying to obviously solve a, uh, water supply, um, you know, problem here.
Yep, absolutely.
A critical water supply problem, yeah. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. You're up next again.
I think now we have to let Kristen in.
Yeah, okay. Let's, uh, we're gonna let Kristen in now?
Yes, please.
There's, there's a couple of folks from her team there.
Oh, okay.
Paul.
Kristen, we'll let Kristen in, she'll, she'll call in the rest of the team about who she's got coming with her.
Kristen, can you hear?
Matt Ross and Nicolette. Hi, I am, oh, I am here, let me see, um, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We've seen her.
Yeah. Air buds aren't working. So yes, uh, Nicolette Long, Matt Ross, Matt Ross looks like he's in, and I think there's Nicolette Long, should be, um, there too. Hopefully Nicolette, that's what her, um, yep, there she is.
Okay.
Nicolette, is she there with us?
Excuse me?
Nicolette?
Yep, I'm online.
Okay. For the record.
Are you with us? Matt, are you with us?
Matt Ross.
I am here, yes.
Okay, thank you. Continue, everybody.
Okay, um, just for the record, this is, um, North American Water Company, it's an application for site plan approval for a granular activated carbon treatment system building at the Diker Water Treatment Facility, Crystal Drive and US Route 202, Mill Street. Um, somebody from the applicant's representative, like to just give us a brief overview where we're at, please?
Sure, so, uh, last time we were, um, with you, we, um, ended the public hearing, and, um, just, there was a little bit of clarity that happened, um, shortly after the public hearing, that, um, uh, what was still pending was the special exemption use permit for the groundwater overlay district, and there was a report that WSP submitted, and you probably spoke about in the prior session, that, um, covered both the GAC building and the wells. So that report has been submitted, the determination is that the GAC project would not have, um, resulted in degradation or contamination of the groundwater, so that has since been submitted. We have filed the special exemption use permit, the stormwater management erosion control permit, um, including, um, submitting the SWIP, and we filed this tree removal permit. And the, the other two items were then, um, uh, Joe, we received, um, the, um, the, ongoing, the, the, the comments and, and responses, and there were two, um, from Woodard and Curran, there were two items that, um, just needed, I think, a little bit of clarity, um, on our end. And should I, shall I keep going?
No, I, did, did Joe have any?
John, they were, they were minor items.
Okay.
And we've coordinated with Saret to make sure that, that documents in front of the board reflect um, those items, and we're comfortable with the board proceeding with those items outstanding at this point, they're very minor.
Okay. Um, Saret? Oh, I'm sorry, Kristen, do you have anything else, let's say?
It's just, we, we will, there was something that we needed to pick up in the SWIP, we'll get that in the final version of the SWIP after we get the review, um, on any, any possible comments from, um, submitting the permit, and then, um, uh, yep, the, the landscaping, it were, you know, the, the plants will be established, and, um, will make, they will be watered for the, during the first period, period. If any plants are not established, don't, do not take, uh, New York American Water would, would replace those, but the intention is that those plants are, um, are suited for the climate, and after established, would not require additional irrigation.
Okay. Saret?
Yes, uh, what happened at the last meeting, uh, just to reiterate, was actually, uh, the board had voted on a negative declaration, and had voted, uh, for me to prepare the resolution for chairman's signature. But in the interim, uh, it was part of that discussion, you know, whether or not they were in the G, the GAC was within the groundwater protection overlay district. It was determined that they were, so offline, uh, in discussions with both Kristen and Nicolette, we determined that, uh, it was better to wrap this all up as one item rather than, uh, separate them. And that's what they've done, they've come back with, uh, all these additional permits. Uh, the groundwater protection overlay district, uh, issues were resolved in the report that we heard earlier, and there was no impact. So, uh, what we've done is we have, uh, set it up so that the board, uh, is in a position to vote on a revised negative declaration, and on a, um, resolution that actually incorporates all three permits along with the site plan approval. So if you look at the attachment to the negative declaration, the two items that were added uh, relate to the, uh, fact that the groundwater protection overlay district uh, was determined that it would, uh, not have, uh, not be impacted as a result of the study that was done, uh, that water quality would not be done, affected, and that, uh, construction, uh, would have, uh, no effect on existing drainage patterns. So that's the first thing that you have to do, is you have to take a vote on the revised negative declaration. So that's what I would ask the board to do first.
And then, and review the EAF also, no?
Well, yes, in the EAF, uh, parts, uh, to uh, identify that there are no significant impacts, and that's how we, uh, move on to the negative declaration.
Yeah, I, I was just mentioning that for the record, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Has everybody got a chance to look at the neg deck?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody comfortable with the revised one?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, uh, then I make a motion that we approve the neg deck, um, with the revisions at the end?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's, let's move on to the, the, the resolution. Has everybody got a chance to look at that?
Yep.
Any comments? Come on, Vicki, you seem to find something.
Well, you know, I always start at the beginning and end at the end, and the resolution never matched, so um, everything looks, no, seriously, everything looks good.
Good.
I can hear, I can hear her scrolling that mouse.
Yeah.
I'm right along with you, Vicki.
The headset picks up everything.
Well, if there's, there's no, um, no changes to that, then I make a motion that we, um, approve resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight. Uh, for the record, it's agreeing of a conditional site plan approval, tree preservation, stormwater management, and erosion sediment control permits, and groundwater protection overlay district special exception use permit um, to the North American Water Company for the GAC treatment system at New York American Water Diker Station. Um, and it is tax, town tax number section sixteen, dot sixteen, block three, lot twenty-two.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much, and we'll, um, we'll see you back next week for the, uh, the part for the, the well drilling, well drilling part. I mean, next month, I'm sorry, next year, actually, next year.
Next year.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, have a good holiday, everybody be well.
Thank you. Our next item is, um, I'm talking about a temporary medical office for the property known as two sixty-five Route two oh two.
What about insight?
Insight is not on the agenda this month.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, they're not on, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay. Um, just for the record, uh, this is a discussion about the, uh, a site plan approval for use of an existing building as a temporary medical office for the use as a COVID nineteen testing site. And the building's located at two sixty-five, two oh two, the BH Business Historic Preservation District. For the, that's the old, uh, deli that's been in town forever. Yeah, Chase Bank, yeah.
Chase Bank. Uh, do we have an estimate of how long they think?
I have a couple of questions too.
Sure, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have a representative here from, from them?
Yes. Only, uh, two people in the waiting room are Donato and Rebecca.
Mr. Santini, I think, I think I saw him earlier.
Okay.
Donato Satani.
Mr. Satani, yes. Is there anybody else with you, sir?
Who do we have from Healthy Therapeutics?
Uh,
The applicant.
This is Dr. Taylor, I'm on the line as well.
Yes.
Do you mind, just give us a, why don't you give us a, a brief, um, overview to the board, please? Bring us up to speed.
Uh, yes, Rebecca Valk.
Okay, let's just, uh, get Rebecca Valk. Hello, Rebecca, are you there?
Okay, I'm unmuted now, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, Chairman Curry and members of the planning board, I am Rebecca Valk with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of owner two six five Route two oh two LLC. I'm joined by members Donato Satani and Josh Eddington, who are on this evening. Uh, this application is for the property at two six five Route two oh two, which many of you may be familiar with, that is located next to your town hall. The property is currently improved with a forty-five hundred square foot structure with dry cleaner and deli. A large portion of the space has remained vacant since Chase Bank left two years ago. The owners seek to make temporary use of this space by providing a COVID nineteen testing center during this pandemic pursuant to a lease with Healthy Therapeutics. Dr. Randolph Taylor is present and available to answer questions about the proposed use. I believe he might be in the waiting room, I know I saw him earlier.
No, he's, he's.
He's at the meeting.
Okay, great. I'm sure it goes without saying that the need for testing has increased greatly in the last six weeks. The governor has revised his executive orders on testing for travelers into and out of the state. The holidays and family gatherings have resulted in an increase in cases. As of today, the seven day rolling average for positive cases in Westchester County is six point one percent. While the seven day rolling average in your neighbor Putnam County is the highest in our region at eight point three percent. In addition to this, many employers require testing before returning to the workplace when employee exhibits any symptoms. The need for additional testing at this time is critical. The proposed tenant, Healthy Therapeutics, will utilize the former Chase Bank space. The interior will be used only by employees for the storage of personal items, to utilize the restroom, and for meal breaks. The testing itself will occur outside at patient vehicles. Patients will schedule their appointments in advance, and appointments will be at scheduled intervals. They can drive up to the Chase Bank space and be tested. If you've had a test, you're aware that it only takes minutes to obtain the sample, the results are provided at a later time. We are happy, uh, we are, we agree that this use will be temporary, and we are happy to discuss with the board any appropriate conditions to that effect. So at this time, I would ask if the board has any questions of the potential tenant or of the owner regarding this application.
Uh, I have a question, which may be difficult to answer, but about how long do you think you'll be there?
Well, I think we'd all like this pandemic to be over sooner rather than later, but unfortunately. Well, I think we'd all like this pandemic to be over sooner rather than later, but unfortunately, it's lasting a lot longer than we had.
It sure is, it sure is.
So the, the intent is to remain consistent with as long as the testing is needed. If the planning board has concerns, we could discuss possibly coming back at, at intervals to touch base with the planning board and let you know how the, the conditions are looking. I know the governor is still giving his daily briefings at this point. But we, you know, i- it's tied to the pandemic.
I personally have no problem with your answer.
Yeah.
Counselor, if, how long is the lease going to be signed for if the project is approved with the, with the landowner or the building owner?
I'm gonna defer to my client on that.
Month to month, probably.
Yes, hi, this is Donato Satani, thanks for having us on tonight. Yes, the, the lease will be in effect on a month to month basis as it's a temporary use and we didn't want to get into a situation where we were running amok with the town.
Understood. And then I, I have a question for the medical provider here. Is the intent to do this by appointment or are you just gonna have an open drive-through that anyone can come in at any time?
It's an appointment.
It is an appointment.
What's that?
It was stated as an appointment.
Well, I want to confirm that that's still the case, still by appointment only? You'll schedule the cars to come in for the drive-through where you, so there's no potential for a hundred cars to come in at one time?
Yeah, good evening, yeah, good evening, everybody, thanks for your time, I'm Dr. Randy Taylor. And absolutely, we're gonna be doing online appointments and literally, we have three ways that you can do that. You can scan a QR code, you can go to our website, or you can use a text message. And literally, it takes you into a scheduler and we're gonna busy space out the appointments so we do not disturb traffic. At any point we do start to disturb traffic, we can actually just shut down the, the line. But we will have people coming in by appointment only and it will not be what you see at a large parking lot at other areas. This is gonna be more of a drive-up appointment. And the reason why we do the drive-up is to keep everybody safe because we don't want anybody inside with the pandemic. So it would be by appointment only and we're gonna be very cognizant of not backing up traffic in the area of the property. We want to be considerate of our neighbors as well as the town into the street.
I'm assuming they would turn around, go on behind the building and then get tested in what used to be the drive-up area?
Exactly, and, and let's say, you know, we, we kind of did some site visits and sometimes there's delivery trucks there. So let's say they're blocking that area. We could also just have the person park in an isolated area of the parking lot, we could come out to them by the driver's side or passenger side, do the test, it takes two, two seconds, and then lets a person pull off and then we send their results electronic.
Okay.
I, I happen to think this is a great application. The certainly is a, a need for the service. My only question is, I don't know anything about health, healthy therapeutics.
Sure.
Would not find much information online, other than Dr. Thomas had recently organized. Is there state licensing and insurance requirements? And if so, have they been met?
You're absolutely right, we are, we are really new startup. We saw a need in the community, I, I'm sure you've all seen the city MDs and the urgent cares, there's five hour waits and people standing out in the rain six feet apart. So we wanted to come up with a solution to sort of address this need. And we definitely have our, our state permits, we're registered with the state, we have electronic reporting with the Department of Health, and I, I have malpractice insurance. We'll get the general liability insurance once we, you know, get approved for the lease. So we'll have all active permits and insurances to make sure, you know, we're, we're within code.
I just wanted it on the record.
Very good question.
So I, I wondered with the board, and I don't know if it's appropriate, doctor, but I know a lot of times when we're looking for applicants to, to receive outside permits, a lot of time we ask for those to be provided so that the town has record. Would, would, would that be appropriate in this case? And would you be comfortable providing those permits and approvals from the state?
I'd be happy to do that, I'd be happy to do that, wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. And my only other item, and it was kind of addressed, that I want to go into is, was, was really, my only really concern is around the traffic and, and it sounds like you're very cognizant, you know, the, this is not a great in, it's not a great out, it's a, it's, it's, you know, traffic is a little bit challenged in this area. And it sounds like you're going to try to use the rear of the building so that cars can come around to the rear of the building and, and head out. So that they're not queued up, I wouldn't want to impact the, the existing business, right? The deli, I, I wouldn't want any of this to impact that, so. But you also, so I, I, I appreciate that it's going in the back, that was my preference. But then when you mentioned about the truck, what I'm wondering is, is it possible for the landlord to maybe designate a couple of spaces? You know, I know nowadays when you go pick up takeout food, right? You go and you pull in, you know, slot number seven and you say, I'm at seven, and they come out and bring you takeout food. I didn't know if as a contingency, we could have some, some, maybe the landlord can identify a, a one or two parking areas just so that you don't find your patients with, you know, with a truck in the back and no place to park. Not that that happens a lot in there, but I, I would, I, I, I'm just curious if that's something that you think is necessary based on your experience? Or would be helpful if it was if the town asked the landlord to do such a designation?
Yeah, you know, when we went and looked at the site, there's about three or four spaces that sit right in front of that Chase Bank, and then you also have sort of the drive-up on the side. So again, the, the truck was just something that sort of happened when we went to see the site and we said, well, what would we do if this happened? Again, because we wanted to be, make sure we were cognizant that traffic doesn't back up. And, you know, we were planning to speak to the landlord to see if we could put some cones in the two or three spots right in front of the chase, just to sort of isolate those so we could use that to, to do exactly what you said, to make sure that, because there, we went through, we went during the morning, it was very busy, people were picking up breakfast and, you know, going to the cleaners. And there was plenty of spaces open, but obviously, with the holiday season, things could get busy. And we would just wanted to make sure we sort of thought of all ways not to sort of cause a disruption locally as well as, you know, in the town.
So you just referenced the three spots in front of the chase, which is, is not behind the chase, right? So, right? So maybe, I, I know on that right-hand side, maybe those spots may be better off coned off towards the rear of the building than the ones in the front, just to not confuse the traffic pattern.
Sure.
If, if it's possible, I actually pulled up a Google image of the site, satellite image that shows all the parking spots, if, if I could get it on a share screen. Let me see.
Yeah, I'm speaking, I think there's spots towards the back right-hand corner that I think are very rarely used, honestly.
There's also spots, also parallel to the, the drive-through, there's places.
Well, that, that was, the drive-through traditionally was go around the back of the building and drive-through.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's where the queue would be for the line.
Right, that's what I was thinking is that we, if the testing was done in the rear of the building, you're really not gonna disrupt any of the operations in the front. And there's a fair amount of spaces in the back that you could use as those designated spaces, as opposed to the ones in the front of the building, which may confuse the traffic pattern.
It's, it's exactly as you said, when the queue starts to build up, what we try to do is we be, we're trying to be aggressive like an assembly line and we could phone out in the back area and get everybody sort of registered and, and even, even swap so they could just go by the even, they got it for the drive-through. But we were just trying to say if it got very congested, then we could just use, like you said, we, we really wouldn't mind wherever you want the spots to be. Because again, we, we're flexible, we can just walk out to the area, the person's already registered online, so it's, it's just pretty rapid, you just go up to them, burn some of the, the documents, get them swapped, and then, and get them on their way. So we could.
I mean, the spots that I would be referring to is if, if, you can span down a bit, would be the ones that are at the top of the screen really, which are in the back of the building, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Back here.
Yeah, those spots I think would be the ideal location for you to block out. This way, traffic's coming, you know, comes in along the right-hand side. If there's too big of a queue, you can direct them to park as you're moving people through.
Joe, point of information, Caremount in Mount Kisco runs a similar facility. And I've been down at Caremount numerous times. And to be perfectly honest, because they do scheduling, there's never more than one or two cars at the site. And they have a lot, a larger area which they could back up on. So I, I really don't think, I think the doctor's telling you that there's really, since it's done on appointments, that's really not gonna be a problem.
Okay, and I, and I, and I, I appreciate that that's the case. You know, as engineers, we always have to think about the worst-case scenario, right? And, and I think the area that is boxed out in the back, if we had a couple of those areas coned off, that would be perfect, I think.
I'd just like to add, if possible, we are very cognizant, the deli and especially the cleaner have not had an easy time during the pandemic, just because less people are going to work, so less people need dry cleaning. And the deli, same thing, less people are on their way to work in the morning, so less people are getting breakfast. So we are very cognizant of making sure that the parking lot doesn't get filled up with cars and therefore the customers they do have get impacted. So just as a landlord, we're, we're gonna be watching it very carefully and working with the doctor. And we've had several conversations to that effect to make sure that that doesn't happen and the site doesn't get overrun by patients.
And, and Mr. Satani, you're, you're fine with maybe in some of these spots to help facilitate that as part of this process?
Yes, that's correct. Originally, we, we actually thought we, we would mark out spots adjacent to where the drive-through was for the Chase building.
Yeah.
Just because it would be easy, it's out of the way, there's another lane for cars to get out of the site anyways. But if it was determined by the board that they actually want spots in the back or wherever, we'd be happy to.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm fine with doing what you're doing, your normal operations in the red area, all I'm saying is if you get queued up, you know, and it starts to get beyond that right-hand corner, I, I, you know, if you get beyond your red area, let's say, let's just start, you know, queuing people up in the parking spots as opposed to queuing up around the building is my only, is my only comment. I have no problem at all with the red area, it's really the overflow if that situation arises that Mr. Prince says very rarely does if ever. So it's probably I'm being overly cautious here, but I just want to be clear. It sounds like we all have the same goals of making sure that the existing businesses aren't impacted.
And also, some temporary or internal signage could also help direct it around if we find that it's getting queued up to the, to those open spots if necessary.
And that, and that was my only last, I guess, comment was how do people know to drive around the back of the building? When they pull in to get their test on, how do they know to go along the back? Is there notification on your website or something, or how do they know that?
It's one way in, one way out.
Right, but how do they know to go around the back of the building is my point.
They can be told when they make their reservation.
Yeah, I would say it, it would definitely be on the reservation for the instructions on what to do when you get to the site. Otherwise, I know that, just from being, going through it, that the signage requirements in this zone are very, very strict and stringent. So I'd, I'd wanna avoid running into an issue there and then a, a resident coming out and saying, hey, these are, you know, not legal use of signs in this, in this zone.
I, I'm okay as lo, as long as there's notifications on the webs, on, on the information, on whatever, the reservation that allows them to know where to go, just so that we're not creating confusion and, you know, I, I think we try to do that with a sign, but you know, when you come back for renewal, if that becomes necessary, this will be an item that will, will make sure that if it wasn't addressed, or it didn't go, as we've discussed tonight, we might have an additional requirement at that time.
Well, and I understand that a sign for the business would be under the sign code, but would internal directional signs require a review of the planning board?
That's, that was my question. Signage usually means permanent.
Right.
Not directional, temporary signage.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, yeah, I would say that it is not, Ms. Valk, that it is not subject to those same requirements, especially because it's a temporary situation. But I also don't necessarily think that we'd want to have, let's just say, a series of cones with, you know, with small signs on them directing people either. I think it would be better to try to make it happen without that. And if that becomes necessary, then it becomes necessary.
Definitely have the ability to.
Caremount does it with cones and signs.
Yeah, right.
I mean, if that's what the board would prefer, then we could do it with cones and signs, I mean, cones as well.
Doctor, how many days you envision this testing, seven days a week?
I would say five to seven days a week. We want, we want to make sure that the testing capacity for the surrounding areas is there. And I just wanted to say, we do have the ability to put some verbiage, it's actually like a waiver that can pop up and kind of describe the directionality that you were talking about to say, you know, pull up, make a right into the, to the lot, make sure you pull around to the building. And if there is a, a line, we're gonna direct you into a space. We're able to do that, so.
And what would be, I mean, if you've got a pop-up, it would be great if you can show an image, right? That shows where we want them to go would be just an, an enhanced benefit and, and enhancement to, to accomplish the goal.
I, I have one question unrelated to the traffic flow pattern. You, you used the word testing, is, is it sample collection? And then you're gonna test the sample in the building? Or are you sending that out to an off-site lab for, for confirmation of the sample?
So that's a great question. So there's two types of tests, is the molecular test, and that's the, the gold standard test. And we have relationships with Quest and Enzo and another lab called Top Labs, those are gonna be send-out labs. We do have the rapid test, there were people that want to travel and people that are on sports teams. Now, that test is also a swab that goes directly into a plastic container outside. And then literally, you take three drops and you put it into a pregnancy test. We do have an industrial hood where these tests will be ran, so the, the filter is like ninety-nine point seven percent, so all of, anything that could get out, and again, it's just three drops from a plastic container that you collected outside that goes into a pregnancy test. So there's really not a lot of biohazard material, there's no blood, there's no sampling being done inside. And literally, it's, it's taking three drops, putting it in a pregnancy test and getting the result in ten minutes.
And then, what's your intent to handle any remnant biohazardous waste, red bag material?
So we will definitely have biohazard material and we'll definitely hire, you know, commercial biohazard removal for that, for those. And literally, the only biohazard material that we're gonna have are those little pregnancy cartridges. Because when you do the other sampling, you're really just taking off the wrapper of the paper and that's not really considered biohazard, even in the hospital, you just throw that in the garbage.
All right, doctor, thank you, thank you for the information.
I mean, that's a good question, Chris, where, where is all that waste stored, Dr. Taylor? Is that in the building? You have a red bag in the building, just like we might see in a hospital, and then you contract and they come and pick that red bag up on some routine basis?
Yes, and you know, there's different ways to do it. Literally, what we have right now, which is one of our other sites, it's a white container, it says biohazard on it. It fills up in the container, it's totally covered, and you can actually mail that out if it's a small amount. You start to get larger amounts and you can have somebody come out and pick it up and you keep it separate.
Can I ask a question? One question? The, you, I know you have a month-to-month lease, but is there any commitment from the landlord of a minimal, a minimum amount of time that you're gonna be there? Because what if he rents that place in, in a month or two? What, what, you, you're not gonna want to move in and move out in a month?
Well, I mean, the, the good, the good, the good thing about.
Is that a, is that a problem?
It's not a problem for us, because I think kind of as you've seen where people, we just did a, a pop-up testing site today in a church parking lot. The infrastructure to set this up is, is not really a lot. You basically are doing everything outside. So really, you just need a space to go to the bathroom, keep warm, everything else is really outside. And the landlord was pretty transparent with us that, you know, at some point if he gets a more permanent tenant, that, you know, it'd be month-to-month. So, and we're, we're fine with that. Again, because it's not like we have to do a build-out or put in a lot of equipment or anything like that. It's really just having the test tube.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a, a big problem for us.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, thank you.
I had three concerns, one was the signage, which I think has been addressed at least somewhat. The other question is, is, what is your, if you're taking reservations online, what is your maximum capacity per hour? So you're, you're gonna take reservations, it'll cut off at some point, how many cars? And you could have multiple people in a car if you had two people from a. And you could have multiple people in a car if you had two people from a family. How many cars per hour? Because you'd also said that if it, um, backed up, you would stop it. But say I'm the person who's coming up next and it gets backed up before me, I'm sitting in my car and I want to make the left-hand turn and I can't go in and I don't know why, and I need that test.
I totally understand.
And I have one more question after that, please.
Part of that is the waiver that I sort of talking about, and we actually use that at our larger sites where people will schedule an appointment and then we say, well, because it is a, a drive-up appointment that, uh, if traffic is getting backed up, we may have to pause the line and you may have to reschedule. That, that's number one. I think initially, we're going to try to be very conservative when we start out. Um, I think we know sort of a number we can see in an hour, I think it kind of ranges somewhere between six to eight cars. But I think we'll probably start out at the more conservative range. And if we see that, okay, we just got that done in 45 minutes and we could add a car, then maybe we would. But this is not a place that we're really, uh, you know, when, where I was at today, where we have this huge lot, we are kind of, um, trying to attract as many cars as possible because we have the large lot to not back up into the street. But I, I think this area, again, we have the two neighbors locally, we have the town hall right there. Uh, we know that if it starts to back up, it's going to create an issue pretty quickly. So we're going in, in there kind of knowing that and being cognizant of that.
Okay, and so it, it doesn't sound like you'll have the volume to meet my next concern, but I just want to put it out there and have the question asked and answered. In looking at the overhead view of the parking spaces, um, so what happens is you're, because you're, because I get mine done up at, um, Harriman up by, front by New York State. So you're in the car, the person who's, the technician who's giving you the test stands next to the car and does the swab. So my, my thing is looking at the parking spaces, um, would you ever have two cars next to each other, directly next to each other? My concern is there's a person who's doing a test and you have two cars next to each other. I don't want any accidents or injuries or, uh, what provision would you have for some spacing between cars?
Oh yeah, no, absolutely, um, we're very, we don't want to cause any accidents and we don't want to get sued for causing any accidents, right? So we're definitely going to be very cognizant of that and, uh, I think, you know, typically what we use our medical assistance, and I think because we have the appointments, we're going to be looking for that person to arrive even and, um, kind of like in terms of directing them around where to go. And, uh, we're just definitely cognizant of the spacing issues, six feet with the pandemic. And we wouldn't want somebody to be tested right next to another car. So I think we probably just inherently institute not testing two cars next to each other and making sure that there's at least one open space if we're doing that. Because just a perception, I know if I went somewhere and I saw someone right next to me getting tested for, you know, a disease like this, I probably wouldn't be happy. Uh, so we, we're definitely going to try to make sure that doesn't happen. I mean, the go, the goal again is to mostly use that red space that you kind of, uh, outlined. And I think if we keep the appointments at, at a reasonable level, uh, we'll, we'll never sort of run into that issue. But we'll, we'll make sure that we don't test two cars next to each other.
All right, thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, one of the other things that just popped in, um, I've seen these testing sites include outdoor tents. Are you planning on putting up any tents?
Uh, definitely, if it, if it was a larger lot, that is the best practice, uh, but obviously I don't think the lot is big enough for that. Um, one, one thing I was going to see if it's possible, if it's not necessary, is sometimes we do have like a little 10 by 10 canopy. But, uh, I don't know if that's going to meet code, it's not necessary, it just helps if it's raining or something to cover the, you know, minimal equipment that we need.
You, you, you're lucky, in inclement, in inclement weather, you have the, um, advantage of the existing overhead for the drive-through.
I was about to say, there's inherent, there's a natural, uh, and that's sort of why we love the site and why we even sort of looked at it. We were basically looking at a lot of facilities that had that natural overhang, so we wouldn't have to deal with the tent permits and the issue with that. So that, that is a natural solution for that.
Okay, good. And just for my own edification, when, when you're, uh, scheduling, are you, 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 are you scheduling for you, by the hour or is there a smaller interval that somebody has a 15-minute interval to arrive? Or is it arrive within the 60-minute interval?
Yeah, we, we're, right now, we have it at 15-minute intervals.
Okay.
Because we know that, you know, typically you can get, if the person's pre-registered, you can get somebody swabbed in one or two minutes. But we're going to be watching it closely, if we need to space it out to 20, we will. And, uh, I get where, I think we're going to make sure we start out conservatively.
Okay.
And we don't cause any, any issues.
Yeah, I mean, Ricky, you had me thinking, Ricky, that if every, if every day scheduled by the hour and there were six people scheduled by the hour and they all show up in the last 10 minutes of the hour, right?
Yeah.
The 15-minute scheduling makes a lot, will, will allow them to control their traffic a lot better.
And also because the test really takes a few minutes, as the doctor said, 15 minutes gives time for somebody who comes in a little late versus there's some people who are going to come a couple of minutes early, that gives some wiggle room.
Yeah, it seems like we shouldn't have more than two or three cars backed up at any one time, it seems like.
Right.
That's the goal.
I do have a question, and that concerns payment. When people book this appointment, are they prepaying with a credit card? Or is money going to change hands outside the building?
Uh, so we, we do have, uh, a Clover apparatus, they, they do have the ability to prepay if they want online. Uh, there is a direct, um, prepayment, uh, software that interacts with our electronic medical record. Uh, we also have a, uh, credit card receptor from Bank of America called Clover, uh, where you just put your card up to the, up to the chip and you can receive payment. And payment is really only for the rapid test. The, um, molecular test is zero out-of-pocket and basically bill the insurance.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question. Uh, would the, would the planner explain exactly what we're doing? This is for a site plan review by us, but as I understand it.
We can give relief.
We're bypassing the requirement of the business historic district. Plus, I believe they have to appear before the zoning board of appeals.
Correct, that's correct. I was going to wait, if the board, if the board approves of it, I was going to read, um, the, um, reasons why we can bypass and, um.
I think that needs to be explained.
Hey, well, I just want to wait to see if there's any more board comments. Excuse me for walking around, but my four-legged friend had to go to the bathroom. Come on, get back in here. Um, is, is the board co- um, okay with, with, uh, waiving the requirements? In other words, we can grant, um, site relief for site plan um, under section 144 dash two?
Yeah, I can make a motion to do that.
All right, I'm gonna, I just want to, for the record, I want to read, um, what constitutes us being able to do that, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
Where the planning board finds that because of special circumstances of a particular case, extraordinary hardships may result from strict compliance with these regulations and it may adjust the regulations so that substantial justice may be done and the public interest secured. Provided that no such adjustment will not have the effect of nullifying the intended purpose of these regulations, the town development plan or the official map of the town. In granting any adjustment, the planning board shall attach such conditions as are in its judgment necessary to secure substantially objective of the standards or requirements so adjusted. And that's 144 dash two. I think we would all agree that this kind of falls into that category.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes. So if we, if we, if we vote on that, we also still have to refer to the zoning board.
John, John, may I say one thing?
Sure.
What you're waiving, that that allows you to waive, is actually section 170 dash 16, which is the part that actually requires site plan re- review in the BHP district.
Okay. So I make the motion that we adjust the regulations, um, and, and grant relief for site plan requirements based on what I just read.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then I'll make a second motion, um, that refers us to the zoning board with the recommendation that they grant relief to need, to, um, need the following special procedures as requested in a BHP, um, zone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 But unfortunately, I, I do not know when they meet next, but, um.
In the middle of March.
Yeah, they meet, they meet, I think, very quickly, I think perhaps even this Thursday.
To the 14th.
Next Tuesday.
We are on agenda for the 15th.
So John, I don't know if you want, if the board wants to make a recommendation or whether it would be on, for this board's approval, um, to have a time period for them to come back. You know, so that this isn't an open-ended temporary permit, I, I think, you know, you, you know, you want to do three months, you want to do six months, you want to do 12 months, whatever it might be, I would, you know, if we're going to put a limit, I think now would be the time to establish that. Oh, so in other words, like, so grant this for, say, three, four months? And then at the end of three, four months, see if they want to extend it, something like that?
I, I would think, I would think the state is going to make it very clear when we're free of this, uh,
Yes.
problem.
Yeah.
It, it, it's not necessary.
I don't think you need.
The board would want to do that, it, the benefit, you know, the benefit is if there are, there are improvements to the operations that we think are necessary that the applicant hasn't been doing based on request, which, you know, this applicant obviously seems very cooperative and will do that. But that's usually why he asks people to come back, so that you can, you know, put, you know, i- i- if there are modifications necessary, the board has the opportunity to identify them.
Should we, should we include language that it's, uh, only for COVID-19 testing? So that, uh, we don't, we can avoid any branch out of any additional testing? Let's say the state does, uh, end up, uh, declaring the pandemic over. I know that wouldn't come from the state, but, um, and, uh, the landlord is, uh, still leasing it month to month. Um, I mean, uh, you know, that would require a whole new review, I would imagine. I don't know if it's required, it's just something that I'm throwing out there.
We have committed in our submissions that this is for purposes of the COVID-19. So any reasonable language that you would want in your resolution, we would not object to. Um, I would just ask if you do decide to have us come back, that we at least do a four-month period? We get through the winter, kind of where there's going to be so much testing with everything going on, um, I think the, the doctors are going to be so busy at this site and, uh, just keeping it, keeping it going, so, uh, just four months would be my request as a minimum.
At a minimum.
Go for six. I have a problem with that.
I would go for six.
I would go for six, too.
Yeah.
Go for six.
Okay.
That's better.
Okay, so I have that in the language?
Yep.
I would just ask the board at that time, would it essentially be a similar appearance like this? Where we just touch base and have a conversation, or would you want something submitted?
Just the updates.
Okay.
Just like this. Quite, quite frankly, I, I, I think it would just be a rubber stamp after six months unless we saw something glaring, and I don't envision that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I will say that at six months, you'll need to, uh, send a letter uh, asking to be on a planning board agenda. So let's, so we're talking about, uh, the June planning board agenda, I would say. That's six months.
Send the letter in April for the May meeting.
Well.
No, they're not.
Six months, I think would be.
We're, we're all going to know it.
I think it would be the June meeting, uh, Dennis.
He's saying send a letter to get on the June agenda.
Right.
Or just send it one month prior, so.
Yeah, May, May is fine.
Okay.
And do, uh, do we need to waive a sidewalk? Because this is a site plan, I forgot what we're looking at, I apologize.
We're not, we're waiving the site, site plan, so we, I don't think we need a sidewalk.
Okay, I, I sort of.
It hasn't changed.
No, I know, but I didn't know if we had to officially waive it, even though it's not.
No, we don't.
Okay, that was more of a question of format than a suggestion.
Just go get a sandwich of taste.
Yeah. I, I know the site, uh, just didn't know if it was a matter of formality, that's all. It's covering all the eyes and dotting the t's or something like that.
Good.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it, good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, and, um.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't see you until six months from now.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
It was six months, have a great evening.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, last on our agenda is, um, the discussion of, basically it's the referral of December 3rd, uh, 2020 from the town board to the planning board regarding amendment of part two, general legislative, chapter 92, environmental quality review of the town code. Um, Saret, why don't you just leave this and bring it up because I'm, you know, I'm a little baffled, so.
Yes, so am I.
That wasn't the word, that wasn't the word, my word choice, but we're live, so.
That's okay, uh, I am not. Uh, the reason that this has come up is because people either call our office uh, or actually come in, uh, many of these have come before you for lot line changes. And when they do for a lot line change, because of the way the, uh, SOMERS code i- is set up, they have no choice but to do a preliminary and a final subdivision. Because the one option, which is the abbreviated subdivision, the language in the abbreviated subdivision specifies that you can only, uh, apply for the abbreviated process if you are a type two action under SECRE. And the SOMERS SECRE legislation does not identify lot line changes as a type two action.
Got it.
Until 2019, neither did the, uh, New York State SECRE legislation. However, the New York State SECRE legislation underwent a modification that became effective January 2019. And among those many changes was the addition of a lot line change to the type two list. So we then had state SECRE having type two actions, uh, as lot line changes. But the, the SOMERS town code, uh, environmental regulations not having type, uh, lot line changes as a type two. And therefore, each time a person came in and said, oh, I just want to change the lot line. And I said, I'm sorry to tell you, but even though you think that's all you want to do, you still have to go through preliminary and final subdivision. So I finally just said to myself, you know what? I'm going to just rewrite this legislation and send it to the town board and tell the town board, you know, this is what's going on and let's make it easier. So they had a lot of questions for me, uh, but I explained it, I think they understood it. And, uh, therefore they sent it out and, uh, now, uh, it's up to you to give your recommendation back to them. Uh, I think it is something that is, uh, very helpful, both to homeowners, property owners and to the planning office and to the planning board. It simplifies what is an otherwise relatively simple process.
Right, and.
How come it took 30 pages?
Long overdue, we've been through two decades of people coming to us looking for simple lot line changes. Two neighbors wanting to move a lot line so one could build a pool or one could build a shed.
Yeah, right.
And all the money of, for engineering fees and all that other stuff, just to move a lot line between two neighbors was ridiculous.
Agreed.
Um, did, did, did the, um, summer sanitation, is that what triggered this?
No.
No, I'm talking residential.
No, it's all residential. What triggered this is people calling me. The last thing that happened, you may remember, uh, the Banffy Ward and Nico, Nico Banffy.
Oh, yeah.
Who, who did this on her own and, uh, all she used was a surveyor and the rest of the process she did on her own and she was, you know, terrific and with a little.
You even complimented her on, on how well that the professionals didn't do it as well as she did.
Absolutely.
Yep, I remember that.
The most, you know, minimal guidance from me, she did this all on her own. And I was very apologetic that she had to go through all of these, these hoops to do this. Uh, and then more recently, and each time I looked at it and I said to myself, oh my God, you know, these people have to go through this whole thing. Uh, and I would look at the abbreviated and remind myself. And I would look at the abbreviated and remind myself, well, they can't do it because it's a type, you know, it's not a type-two action. And I remembered that, you know, all of these things were looked at. So I looked back at the SECRE and said, yeah, they changed it at the state level because they realized that this was not something that reached the level of a significant impact. And therefore, they made it a type-two action. And therefore, I felt at the local level, it could also mirror what was happening at the state. That's what this is about.
So if I understand you right, the town board will actually change the amendment, is that correct?
The town board will change.
Code.
To words.
Regulations.
The words in the legislation, which adds, I'm looking at it right now. If you look at the legislation that I provided, they will add, just like in the state legislation, it's exactly the same that happened in the state legislation. A number, I think it's B2, it used to say, the granting of individual setback and lot line variances. That's what.
Okay.
For type-two action. Now it adds and adjustments. So that's really all that's happening here.
So you want us to just send our recommendation that the town does that, the town board does that?
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I, I am, I am all for streamlined bureaucracy, man. If we could, if we could make that happen, amen to that.
Holy. Let's start here and move our way up to the federal government.
Listen, it, don't laugh.
You have to be a swamp swimmer.
Grassroots, you know, small-town community legislation sometimes can catch on and balloon itself out. So it, it starts in venues like this.
Well, I think we should also compliment the state because it started at the state level.
That's right.
True, true, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay, so then I, I guess if we need a motion, but otherwise, I, I think it's pretty obvious, it's unanimous. We'd like you to send a recommendation to the town board. So do we need a vote?
Yeah, you need a vote.
Okay, I make a, a motion that we send this recommendation as presented. I guess it's Chapter 92-6B2 for the lot line adjustments as a type-two action. And we send that recommendation to the town board. With unanimous approval. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Saret, for taking the initiative.
Thank you, Saret.
Right.
Tell the board it's, it's unanimously unanimous.
Yes. Well, I guess I'll wish everyone happy holidays and let's hope that 21 will bring us a little more peace, I guess. I guess since we're looking for a little, a peace with our health and our heads. Good Lord, who knows, who knows?
Everybody have a happy holidays. I apologize. No chocolates this year, sorry.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we're not doing that.
When's your contract up, Joe?
Because COVID.
All right, our, our next meeting is, is January 13th, 21. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy New Year, too.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.